I'd like to bring the Building and Ground Subcommittee meeting and the Committee of the Whole together. Roll call, please.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
On today's agenda, we have the Ford School Painting Playground Activities on the TAR. Could someone come up from Ford that's representing this proposal? Anyone?
It looks like Principal Nerrick is not able to join us this evening.
Oh.
So if we could just quickly run through, this is a partnership with Sherwin-Williams and Family Resource Center and Center Board to pave, to do a painting project on the pavement at Ford Elementary School. And it is an opportunity for leadership in terms of the students being involved in the project for the different activities that will be on the TAR.
Okay, so is this being paid for by Sherwin-Williams?
Yes.
Questions? Anyone?
Make a motion to move forward to support. No questions. I seen it in the packet. I think it's a great project. It's a wonderful opportunity for our students and their community there, so. Strong project. So I make a motion to move forward.
Second?
Roll call.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is from Duit School Mural. Could you, anyone here to present on that idea? It looks like a wonderful idea.
Hi, good evening. Andrea Tadde, the interim principal at Duit's. So I'm here to just present an idea that was approved by the Lynn Cultural Council to build a mosaic mural in our back hallway, designed by students, built by students, along with the beautiful stuff project. I believe you have the project in front of you.
It is beautiful. Who is picking up the cost for this?
So most of it is funded through a grant to the Lynn Cultural Council. What is left over, Patty Kloblansky has some art money, and then whatever is, if we go over it, we'd like to extend the project to make sure that all students have access. It will be done as an artist in residence, so it will be done throughout the week in art classes. If there is extra, we will go through just fundraising money that we have, but most of it is being donated through this, or covered through this grant.
Questions?
Make a motion to move forward with the project.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Oh, sorry. And send them, send it to the full committee.
With the amendment, oh, yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have Connery School coming. The principal Valdez could come forward and a little mural for yourself.
Yes. Good evening, members of the committee. Similar to Andrea's project, we are also being funded by the Lynn Cultural Council. The fiscal agent in this case would be SPUR. We partner with them. They support us a lot in our school and our food pantry. The project is for the students to work. We're going to do an after-school program for between four to, or eight to 12 students. The work will be done on plywood, and we are asking for approval to be hung up in the front of the school.
Thank you. Questions?
Make a motion to move this to the full committee.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And that's a motion to adjourn the Buildings and Ground Subcommittee.
Second?
Roll call.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the Policy Subcommittee for March 27th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadowite?
Present.
Okay, so on tonight's agenda for the Policy Subcommittee, we have some changes that need to be made to a few of our, a bunch of our policies due to the Title IX. That's been made at, the changes have been made at the federal level with the Trump administration, so I'd like to call to the table Attorney Charlie Gallo, who will kind of lead us through this for us tonight. So Attorney Gallo.
Thank you, and good evening, Chairperson Dugan, Policy Subcommittee members Sadowite and Reed, Superintendent, members of the administration, Mayor, Madam Vice Chair, and members of the school committee as a whole. For the record, Charlie Gallo, Lynn Public Schools Compliance Officer, here as usual as a co-drafter of policies, but also tonight here in terms of substance as Title IX Coordinator for the district. The policies that you have before you look dense. I'm aware that you have a 37-page packet in front of you. I promise we're going to go through these in a pretty straightforward manner, and that these have been drafted in close consultation with Attorney Katie Maynall, who is our Title IX Attorney for the district. Chairperson Dugan, if I may, I'd like to offer to take the first three items, ACA, ACAB, and AC together, just to help explain the rationale for these changes.
Absolutely.
Thank you. So sexual harassment under Massachusetts law is broad, both in terms of who it covers and the severity of the conduct that it covers. The standard under the federal Title IX law is different. The standard under the federal Title IX law is a higher standard, which is severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive, and currently only and strictly only covers sex-based harassment or discrimination. At the tail end of the Biden presidency in August of 2024, there were changes that were made to the Title IX law at the federal level. Those changes were quickly rolled back, however, and so what you have before you is a reversion to the Title IX law that was in effect in 2020, which districts and the school committees are advised by council, by the Mass Association of School Committees, and by the Mass Association of Superintendents to adopt. What I want to note, though, and this will make sense as I go through these three policies, is that all the gaps that exist in Title IX are still covered under Mass law and under policy ACAB. So ACA becomes Title IX-only, severe, pervasive, and objectively offensive conduct that is strictly targeted based on sex. ACAB removes any reference to Title IX and cites the Mass laws, 151B as to employees, 151C as to students, and it allows us to investigate under Mass law sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, marital status, family status, pregnancy, all the gaps that would exist, frankly, in the federal Title IX law. And then finally, we have updated ACA, or excuse me, AC, which is the general nondiscrimination policy, to include any and all protected classes at the federal and state levels. I'll read through the list. Sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, marital status, family status, pregnancy, which includes nursing or pregnancy conditions, parental leave, race, which includes historic hairstyles, color, national origin, creed, religion, ethnicity, ancestry, age, genetic information, active military or veteran status, disability, special need, proficiency in the English language, or academic achievement. So those are the, in a nutshell, first three items on your agenda, AC, ACAB, and AC. I'm happy to take any questions on those or pause for votes on the proposed drafts. Thank you.
Member Reed?
For, thank you, Attorney Gallo. For policy ACAB, didn't we change that last year?
Thank you very much. So what happened is that in August of 2024, the Biden administration took, correct, a much broader approach to Title IX. Twenty-six states sued. They generally won.
Gotcha.
And in January, prior to the Trump inauguration, there, a court deemed them unlawful nationwide, those changes. So however we may feel on them, yeah.
Was it Massachusetts before, or was it just a different standard?
The standard, the Biden standard?
Before that.
Oh, it was severe pervasive-
Gotcha, gotcha.
-or objectively offensive, and he changed the "or" to "and."
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Make a motion to move the changes to policy ACA, policy ACAB, and policy AC to the Committee of the Whole?
Okay. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Okay, and then Attorney Gallo, we have a bunch more that we're going to need to talk about.
We, we do, but I believe I can do so efficiently.
I know you will.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Dugan. The remaining policies under item four, the first sort of stack of them, A through I, are internal-facing policies. The final few of them, J through L, are important student-facing policies, technology-responsible use, dress code, and bullying. What I've done with the final three, the technology-responsible use, dress code, and bullying, is I have updated those protected classes verbatim to what we have in AC. The laundry list I just went over, which I won't go over again unless anyone, no, not hearing. So that laundry list appears verbatim there. And then the internal-facing policies, A through I, and I'll illustrate this if I could, if you take a look at JM. Because those are internal-facing policies, what I've done instead is just made reference to AC. And so it reads, in this case, "The Lynn Public Schools is committed to equitable access to student awards and scholarships. Scholarships may be awarded to eligible students provided there is no unlawful discrimination on the basis of any characteristic protected by any federal, state, or local law, or Lynn Public Schools' nondiscrimination policy, AC, or any other Lynn policy that may exist at any time." The reason that you may wish to consider doing that is that if these protected classes are changed again, this will save you from having to have an agenda with a laundry list of items. So this will be a more efficient approach. It'll provide for a briefer policy if you'd like to do that. If you prefer not to, though, we can certainly amend to restate the laundry list in each. And happy to take any questions on those as well, of course.
Make a motion, which, is it, is it all these, or is it?
So I would, don't, don't die. I make a motion to move policies under IV, A, B, C, D, F, G, H, I to the Committee of the Whole.
Second? Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Make a motion to move policies JK, L, under IV to the Committee of the Whole?
Second?
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Okay, seeing none for the business?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Roll call, please. Oh, second. Roll call, please.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Gallo, as always.
All right, we will now move into the open-mic portion of the meeting. The open-mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern to the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in the Lynn Public Schools District and having discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. Do you have a list here to start? When you begin, if you could please state your name and address, and the first one is Michelle Sheehy.
So my name is Michelle Sheehy. I am from 30 King Street. I am a Marshall Middle School parent, and I'm here to address SEL, potential SEL budget cuts. Okay, excuse my voice. I lost it today. I took a vacation. Okay, so let me paint a picture of my daughter for you. She's a smart, confident, self-motivated sixth grader at Marshall Middle School. She's the top of her class. She advocates for herself. She's a great friend. She's an avid dancer. She serves on student council. She's actively involved in multiple school clubs. Her teachers describe her as a model student, engaged, hardworking, and a joy to have in class. By all accounts, she's a young lady who has it all together, until the moment she didn't. What most people don't see is that she also struggles with severe debilitating anxiety, especially when it comes to school. Actually, less than five people have physically seen her at her very worst. This includes my husband and I. Two of them, possibly all three, sit right behind me. They're all standing here, wearing green shirts, just like I am. Without them, I don't know how we would have made it through these past seven months. Watching my daughter go from thriving to struggling, and seeing her confidence shaken, feeling completely helpless, has been heartbreaking. These two incredible people in this room stepped in just when we needed them most, Ms. Stephanie Cody and Ms. Sonya Ward, both clinicians at Marshall Middle School. These clinicians, part of the social-emotional learning or SEL department, didn't hesitate. They provided resources, suggested accommodations, and most importantly, gave my daughter a safe space and the tools to cope. They have changed her life and my family's life. Less than 48 hours ago, I found out there were significant cuts being proposed to the SEL department, including these life-saving supports for my daughter. They might be gone next year. The thought of telling my daughter that the two people she trusts most at this school could be gone is absolutely terrifying. What will that do to her sense of security? What will it do her, what will it do to her trust in the school system that's supposed to look out for students just like her? Cuts to the SEL department won't make mental health, mental health struggles disappear. They'll only leave more students without the help they need. We certainly don't need fewer of these professionals in the schools. We certainly need more. Please protect the SEL department. Protect the staff who make a difference. Protect students like my daughter, who you think may not need it, but truly does. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. Next, Jennifer Fuji.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jennifer Fuji, and this is my friend Javion. He's a Callahan first grade. I am the Callahan Task Clinical Supervisor. Today, I stand, I sit before you, actually, representing the SEL team to highlight the critical, can you hear me? Highlight the critical importance of the mental health support for the students. As we all know, the social-emotional well-being for all our students is the foundation of the academic success and overall development. In January alone, our dedicated clinical team supported over 3,700 students in just 22 days. This incredible effort was not by chance, but a testament to the commitment and hard work of our clinical team. Thirty-seven members of our clinical team are working about 110% to 150% of their contractual hours to meet the needs of our students. Our therapeutic programs, Fall Infecto Task, as well as Hood and Shoemaker, have had vital, have been vital in supporting some of our most challenging students. These programs ensure that students who need specialized support are able to receive that within the district, preventing the need for costly out-of-district placements. To put it into perspective, the cost of sending one student in the out-of-district averages 150,000 to 200,000 per year per student. This would farly exceed our SEL budget. Our team helps to ensure students get what they need to prevent this from happening. The work of our clinical team does go beyond the numbers. Our clinical team is the backbone of the school community. They provide vital support, not only for our students, but our families, teachers, nurses, administrators. Their expertise is critical in maintaining a safe and nurturing environment for all. They're often the first line of defense in crisis situations. For example, 91 students were assessed for suicidal ideation in just 108 school days, potentially saving the life of a child or many children. This is invaluable. In fact, we were, we are projected to provide 4 million direct service minutes in the 2020, 24, 25 school year, in compliance with our IEP and 504 minutes. This is a reflection of our tremendous need for the mental health services in our schools. To cut these services would not only disrupt the lives of the students, but risk creating long-term challenges that would be much harder and much more expensive to address in the future. I urge you to consider the long-term effects of our students and the community. The clinical, the clinical model that we've so hard worked to establish that is one that serves the students well, and it is a model that we must continue to support. I ask you to vote no on cutting the mental health services we provide and to invest in the well-being of our future leaders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Jessica Nason. If you could just please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Jessica Lynch Nason, Lynn Public Schools. I am currently the Clinical Supervisor at Shoemaker Elementary School, who I have been supporting for the last three years. I am personally at risk if there are cuts in the SEL department. It took a lot of courage for me to come up here tonight, but I realize this is just what social workers do. They advocate and stand up for what is right. They stand up for our students and their families, and I'm here to express to you that making any cuts to SEL is not right for our students. We often say we care about the well-being of our students, but caring must be reflected in action. Schools should not just be places of academic achievement. They should be environments where students feel safe, supported, and valued. SEL provides that foundation. Most of the time, clinicians and clinical supervisors in schools are the very first time families have interactions with mental health services for their child. This is without any insurance barriers or financial stressors and its immediate support. They get to send their child to school every day, knowing they are welcomed with any hardships they may be facing. If we cut students' access to clinical staff, what message are we sending to our students? That their mental health is not a priority? That academic performance is the only thing that matters? That we expect them to succeed without the emotional tools to handle stress, failure, or conflict? Mental health matters, and our students matter. Making any cuts to the SEL department will be detrimental to the well-being of our students and to the Lynn community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next is Stephanie Coat.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Cody. I'm Thurgood Marshall Middle School. Ten years ago, I became the social worker at Thurgood Marshall Middle School. I was the only social worker for four years, barely keeping my head above water, attempting to help 1,000 students. During this time, I was only able to help a small percentage of these students. Those who suffered in silence did not receive help. In 2023, I became the clinical supervisor. This was a true promotion that I worked extremely hard for. Today, I have a team of five clinicians who I can honestly say are dedicated to the students and families of Lynn. I hold my clinicians to an extremely high standard, and they exceed my expectations regularly. As clinical supervisor, my job may have changed to administrator, but I still remain doing the same work. I carry a caseload of students and work like the clinicians do. We are now able to help those who suffer in silence. I've committed 10 years of my life to the Lynn Public Schools. I've created a presence and the standard for how social workers are seen in our building. We are the trusted adults. You've received letters from past and current students of Marshall in support of me. These students have even shared that I've changed their life. However, the truth is, the students of Lynn have changed mine. During these 10 years, I've helped students, families, and the community on their worst days. I've sat with a student as they received news that their parent had died. I've been the first person a student told about sexual abuse at home. I've run fundraisers for families who lost their homes in a fire. I've been the person a student confided in about their suicide attempt. I have ridden in countless ambulance rides during a mental health crisis. I've supported a child as they've come out as transgender to their unaccepting parents. I have supported TMMS through the deaths of two students and two staff members. On the other hand, I've been witness to the best days. I've been the first person a student told that their mother's cancer is in remission. I regularly call parents to share their child's great day in school. I have hugged students and parents at their middle school graduation, a thought that once seemed impossible. I have written letters of recommendation for college. Clinicians are not just robots servicing IEPs. When I heard about the cuts to the SEL department, what was most shocking was the lack of regard for what we are actually doing at the schools. To cut people based on money and not the actual needs seems arbitrary, and most of all, dangerous. What does Lynn really need? If you ask the people on the ground, we need more clinicians. We need bright programs in every school. We need fecto middle school backup. We need more hall monitors and family monitors. I've received many opportunities to leave Lynn for higher-paying jobs in other so-called easier districts. However, year after year, my commitment remains to Marshall and the city of Lynn. However, finding out on Monday night I was on the chopping block shows the commitment is not mutual. I respectfully invite any and all of you to come meet my team, see how we work, and see that clinicians and clinical supervisors are needed at all schools in the LPS. If you believe our students deserve a strong future, invest in their present needs. If we want our students to give us the scores we were hoping for, they first need to be regulated and safe. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you for sharing that. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next is Cassandra Fram Ferguson. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Cassandra Ferguson, Community Health Worker at Ingalls Elementary School. And I'm here tonight because after hearing what happened to the social workers, I had to have my voice heard. The social workers are so much needed in the school system. Ingalls Elementary School is the largest elementary school in the city of Lynn with hundreds of kids, and they're not just here for the kids, they're here for the parents. As a Latina, I see the social workers, them working hard. I work very closely with the social workers at Ingalls, because we have families daily that come in. We have the kids that's in need of them. I started Ingalls six years ago, and I remember where kids would be out in the corridors, either they crying or they sitting down sad. Today, you don't see kids, because the social workers are seven, they're constantly working with the kids. The teachers are so much needed for the social workers' support with these kids, and for the families that come to the school. So I'm asking to really consider your decision and help all the social workers, not just Ingalls, but all the social workers here. As I worked in Marshall for years, I see all the, you know, the social workers at work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That was the last one who signed up in advance. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at open mic? Anyone else for open mic? Yep, coming up, and state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name's Lindsay Tobin. I am a paraprofessional at Shoemaker Elementary. I am a Lynn Classical alumni. When I was a senior in high school, in the beginning of the year, I was diagnosed with anxiety, depression. I had suicidal ideations, and I was self-harming. The only way I got through my senior year of high school was the help from the clinicians at Classical. I saw them once a week, and they helped me immensely, and I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for them. I'm now the JV softball coach at Lynn Classical, and my, my players also struggle with mental health issues, and I know they see a clinician weekly. And I am so thankful that they have someone to talk to. I can talk to them as much as I can, but I'm not a professional in that category. Without them, I don't know, I wouldn't be here today, and some of my players- Without them, I don't know, I wouldn't be here today, and some of my players would not be where they are today. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. State your name and address, please.
Ooh, hot mic. Hi, I'm Brianna Corcoran. I am a parent of children who have received services, and I also am a para at Fallon Elementary. First of all, I'd like to thank you in advance for hearing my concerns. I'm a parent of two students who attended the public schools. The support they have received throughout the years helped my two boys to become a college student and a high school senior, as well as inspired me to take the career path I have taken today. Beginning in kindergarten, my son began displaying behavior that would eventually be diagnosed as autism, with the support of the clinicians at Lynn Public Schools. Through the journey of attending three elementary schools and finally ending up at the therapeutic school at Fallon, I was supported by clinicians along the way. Often, when I felt alone as a single parent trying to figure out what my son needed, they were the support that I could always rely on. The staffing that was available to him in high school, as he was reduced to a 504, allowed him to continue to access support as needed. I have no doubt that he would not be able to be where he is today without them. I don't even know where I am. My other son at Classical has received so many services to help him behave with his mental health issues that I don't know what would be, from hurting himself to, I don't even know. And the help that he has at Classical is just immense. It could be your child, grandchild, or friend's child. These students with trauma, mental health issues, and disabilities need a person who helps them feel safe and helps them to be successful, not just in school, but in life. My question is, what message do you want to send these students? You have severe trauma, you're on your own, you figure it out. Or, like what we say at Fallon numerous times a day, "We hear you. You matter. We love you. How can we help you?" You have this choice to show them, to tell them, "You matter. Help is available for you." Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else for open mic? Anyone else want to speak at open mic? Is that someone for open mic? All right, state your name and address, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tommy Tran. I'm a junior at Lynn English, and I live on 140 Verona Street. I have a little script here. Last December, I came to the school committee to voice my concerns and hopes for the funding and policy support of extracurriculars within the Lynn Public School District. That evening, I had mentioned the importance of the clubs and sports that our school district provides to its students, environments where they're able to discover a wide variety of passions. Yeah, wide variety of passions. Though I was the only student speaking on open mic that day, this problem wasn't just mine, but a sensation coursing broadly throughout our public high schools here in Lynn. Very soon after I spoke to you all in December, other students like me came to you to share their personal stories on why their extracurricular was so important to them and how even a bit of additional support would still be significant. This surge in advocacy is certainly not spontaneous either, but this mutual problem on funding deeply affects us all. Although Lynn is known to be a culturally diverse city, all of us have unified together to step up in a place where we lack representation in the choices that affect us the most. We're here in attendance because we're committed, not just as students, but also as people who care for the future of their community as well. On Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, we, as the students of Lynn Public Schools, took time out of our school day to protest at the Massachusetts Board of Education to refute the seat expansion of KIP Academy, which otherwise would have cost our district to at least $8 million. Despite the intimidation that it brought, we stood tall with our signs until the vote was 6 to 4 in our favor of rejecting this expansion. As I mentioned before, there aren't clear accessible channels of inclusion and direct involvement and decision-making for students when it comes to decisions that affect how our school will run and what they prioritize. For me, as a junior at Lynn English, there were some graduation requirements suddenly imposed on us without our prior awareness, limiting many people I know with their schedules, now having to allot space for at least two art-related electives. Furthermore, a few teachers have come to me, a student, and complained about their change in structure for some of our advanced placement classes. Many will be now half-year courses, which simply do not provide enough time to go over material before the AP exams in May. This is all to say that students in Lynn need more representation on important decisions. We have already demonstrated the battles that we're willing to fight for, for this district, which is our home. In the end, I believe all we truly need is to be taken seriously in the knowledge we have about our own experiences and to be involved as collaborators in helping LPS to be the best that they can. It's often disheartening when feeling powerless pushes our students to walk away from a potential future. Today, I'm joined by a couple other students from a group representing various clubs and sports teams, emphasizing once more how broad the need to better support extracurriculars is. Students of Lynn Public Schools are about our educational journeys and want to be an active part of making them feel better. So I hope all of you will find ways to work with us going forward. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else for open mic? State your name and address, please.
Hello. My name is Takim. I use he/him pronouns, and I am the vice president of my grade's class office, as well as the chess club. I'm here with Tommy and Lilian. We're part of an organization called Neighbor to Neighbor, and we're doing advocacy around our extracurriculars being underfunded. So I do a lot of other activities as well, like science team, math team, inclusivity. I've done orchestra in the past as well, and I'm here to speak on behalf of this because we've heard that the administration has been trying to take the issues that we've raised seriously, and there are people listening and asking questions and working with us, such as our principal at our school. And while I want to give appreciation, I want to remind us that it's not going to be an easy fix, but in the meantime, we can take steps, small steps, something actionable or numeric. And over the past few weeks, we've been looking at what resources could be beneficial to the clubs that we're in. So I can represent chess and talk to you guys about the process I've been having organizing tournaments with other schools, and we're thinking like having stuff like enough funding for a chess.com premium subscription, or more money for awards or chess boards, like resources that we need for our clubs. And these aren't just side activities, they're one of the ways that students can explore what they care about for free during school, because after you graduate, you have to pay to kind of explore your interests on your own. And these non-athletic clubs often get overlooked, and that's why we want to see like students more involved with these conversations and more like funding for these extracurriculars, like specific budgets that can go towards each of these clubs.
Hello, my name is Lilian Idobum. My address is 224 Fayette Street in Lynn. I'm a part of Neighbor to Neighbor Youth Group, and I'm a senior at Lynn English. I'm one of the captains of my cross-country indoor and outdoor track teams. I've been in class office for four years. I'm a part of the mock trial team. I play soccer, and I'm also a member of the Black Student Union. So I'm involved in a lot of things at my school, so I've experienced firsthand the way we are underfunded and the frustration that a lot of our students go through. I'm sure at this point you've heard our complaints and our advocacy. Just like Tommy said, we were present at the Board of Education meeting back in February, which denied the expansion of KIP. So as you can see, we're very dedicated to speaking about the things that concern us and affect us. So for a long time, we've been having to work with the little that we have, you know, teachers having to take money from their pockets to support our extracurricular clubs and just us not having like proper equipment or the things that we need. So tonight, we're asking for more funding for extracurricular clubs, and some of these clubs were created by students at our schools, so which just shows you that we're dedicated to creating space, creating creative space for our peers, just to be adventurous and just to learn about other things. So with more funding, we will feel supported because these clubs were created by our peers. So without funding, it'll just be like, we're not supported, or like our ideas aren't really, you know, like being taken seriously. Most importantly, we want you to just listen to the voices of all of us that are present here. Don't think of us as too little to address these things, but work for us to create a better environment for our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else for open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. We will close the open mic portion of the meeting. Thank you all so much for sharing that. We really appreciate it, and we will call to order the sixth regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaitley?
Present.
Member Peña?
Absent.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadowite?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
If you could all please rise who are able for a salute to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in memory of Claire Hatch, retired paraprofessional, passed away February 27th, 2025; Donna Mayo, retired lunch aid, March 1st, 2025; Patricia Malanson, former paraprofessional, March 7th, 2025; and William Marilla, retired administrator, March 10th, 2025. Thank you. Next item is the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the fourth regular meeting on February 17th, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Aye, Sabbath. Next is appointments.
Good evening. It's our pleasure to-
Why don't we recess for a minute? We're going to call a quick recess and move to appointments and elections.
Thank you. Good evening. So for our appointments this evening, we're very happy to share that Alicia McDougall will be the interim principal at Shoemaker Elementary effective April 1st, so we want to welcome her, and she will be there until the end of the year.
Yeah, unfortunately, at the last minute, she was unable to join us tonight, but she just wanted to extend her gratitude. She's very excited to step into this leadership role in the interim position at Shoemaker. She's dedicated many years to Shoemaker, and so she's just excited to have this opportunity. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That's great. Terrific. All right, next item is the Pickering Middle School proposed redistricting.
Good evening, everyone. As we're all aware, the new Pickering Middle School is underway. We are all very excited to see this building completed and move our students and staff into a beautiful new building. These are some renderings of what it will look like at its completion. A great deal of work has been put into researching and looking at data to note that any student who is being assigned to the Pickering Middle School will be exposed to a brand-new building with all the amenities that our students deserve as part of their education. I would like to personally acknowledge and thank the people who have put a great deal of time and effort into completing this work. From the city side, Danielle Smith and Lauren Drago, thank you. From the LPS side, Executive Director of Data, Jennifer Shorter; Director of Data, Matt Cronin; from the compliance team, Charlie Gallo, our compliance officer; Lauren Walsh, who is his assistant; and from the Welcome Center, Yvette Martinez; and of course, my deputies, my deputies. Well, they are mine. They are mine. They're my very good friends who have been part of this work as well. So, a new Pickering Middle School. The new Pickering is scheduled for completion in early 2027. This facility will provide 185,000 square feet of space across five stories, high-quality cafeterium, gymnasium, as well as space for health services, media center, makerspace, drama, and movement. Classroom floor plan, supporting grade-level clusters, and outdoor learning environments overlooking the ponds. The view at this school is going to be beautiful. Redistricting will balance the middle school enrollment. The new Pickering Middle School's increased capacity will enable us to balance the three middle schools. What's not changing with this? Anyone's assigned middle school until the 27, 28 school year. Anyone's assigned elementary school or high school, or any programming regarding students' ability to attend a school outside of their assigned district. This slide represents our current street directory and the feeder schools. So you can see, Aborn feeds into Marshall and Pickering; Bricket to Marshall; Callahan to Breed; Cobbett to all three middle schools; Connery to Breed; Druids to Breed; Ford to Marshall and Pickering; Harrington to Marshall; Hood to Marshall and Pickering; Ingalls to Marshall; Lincoln Thompson to Breed; Lynn Woods to Pickering; Sewell Anderson to Breed and Pickering; Shoemaker to Pickering; Sisson to Pickering; Tracy to Breed; and Washington to Breed and Marshall. The priorities and methodology around doing this work, our goal was to balance all three middle schools to serve student-building capacity at each, based on student enrollment trends. The priorities: distance and convenience, access to updated facilities, and elementary boundaries. We assigned every student in the future middle school cohort to their nearest school. Then we made changes for a few hundred students to improve convenience. Finally, we shifted more students based on elementary school boundaries. The dotted area indicates approximate areas of the city where middle school districts are changing. Breed will serve Callahan, Connery, Druids, Lincoln Thompson, Sewell Anderson, part of Tracy, and part of Washington. Marshall will support Bricket, part of Cobbett; Harrington, part of Ingalls; part of Washington. And Pickering will support Aborn, part of Cobbett; Ford, Hood; Lynn Woods, Shoemaker, Sisson, part of Ingalls, and part of Tracy. These middle school district feeders represent the changes to the elementary feeder schools. Aborn changed from Marshall to Pickering. Cobbett no longer goes to Breed, but only split to Marshall and Pickering. Ford changed from Marshall to Pickering. Hood changed from Marshall to Pickering. Ingalls continues to go to Marshall, however added Pickering. Sewell Anderson will no longer go to Pickering, but will all go to Breed, and Tracy continues to go to Breed, however we've added Pickering. As you can see with these changes, our street directory will go from this existing enrollment of 1,359 at Breed, 627 at Pickering, and 1,454 at Marshall, to a projected proposed district boundary of 1,208 to Breed, 1,149 to Pickering, and 1,083 at Marshall, making it more balanced across the city. Once we collected, once we collect public comments and hold a public forum, a decision will be finalized. At that point, the Welcome Center will send out letters to all existing families who may be impacted by this change to inform them of this change, should it get approved by school committee. The key takeaways in this work, the proposed redistricting will benefit- The proposed redistricting will benefit all students. More students are assigned to their closest school. More elementary schools are assigned to one middle school. And more students at the new Pick, uh, and more students at the Pickering Middle School. For the proposed district, 82% of the assigned students in the middle school cohort are assigned to their geographically closest school. And 81% of the assigned students in the middle school cohort remain the same boundary that they were previously located, located in. So this, uh, graphic, this visual, shares with you the process that we're taking. Uh, tonight, this presentation is really informational and an opportunity to ask questions. We will then launch our community comment period beginning April 1st through April 30th. This PowerPoint and a link to the QR code that I'll show you in a moment will also be posted on the Lynn Public Schools website and the MSBA website for community comment and feedback. We will hold a public forum at Pickering Middle School Gymnasium on April 30th at 5:30. Uh, the feedback and co, uh, public comments will be taken into consideration, and any adjustments, uh, will be made if needed at that time. A presentation will be conducted for the school building committee to inform them of this process and any of these changes. And the final step will be to come back to you as a committee on June 12th, 2025, to share any adjustments from the feedback that are, were needed, and to hope to get a vote to approve these recommendations. So this is the QR code that they'll be able to, and we'll also include the link to that survey. Uh, and it allows parents and community members to share thoughts, uh, feedback, uh, that we will then, our team will then, uh, tease through and see if there's any, um, anything that comes to the top for a needed change. Questions?
Mayor Reed?
Thank you so much for this work. It's making my brain spin, so, uh, it's a complicated puzzle, so thank you all for, for this. Um, if someone is, I, I don't, sorry if you mentioned this, but if someone is halfway through, if they're in seventh grade or something, are they gonna have to move schools? Are they able to finish out there?
So, we've had actually conversations about when it's time to move into the new school. Um, if it's in the middle of a school year, only the Pickering students who are existing in the Piter, Pickering Middle School will move into the new facility for the remainder of that year. And in September, anyone that's impacted would then transition to, uh, the new school.
So if you're, if you're in seventh grade in, at Breed and you're in the new ones, you'll move to Breed for eighth grade, for example?
Yes.
Is that, yeah. Um, cool. And then, so, uh, is, with this, I should know the answer to this, but with the new, uh, Pickering, are all those schools kind of now the same capacity?
Yes. Breed is, uh, has the ability to hold more, I think, than, Marshall was about 1,100. Uh, this Pickering, the new Pickering is about 1,100, and I believe Breed is, I think, somewhere- 1,400? 1,200.
Gotcha. Uh, and the last question, I guess, I don't know why I never thought of this, but, so is there gonna be more classrooms in terms of staffing things in the new Pickering?
Well, there'll definitely be new, more classrooms.
Yeah, in terms of staffing, more staffing, et cetera.
Well, but what will happen is, um, the natural shifting of staff, right?
Yeah, right, right.
If you're taking sta, uh, students who are moving to the new Pickering from Breed and Marshall, then when the postings happen in the end of the school year, that first year, staff would have the ability to, we would have to close jobs and open it Pickering. And then they can interview for those jobs.
Thanks so much.
Any other questions? Yeah, Member Gaitley?
I just want to compliment you on this because I think that it was very well-balanced. I don't think there's gonna be too much disruption amongst the neighborhoods. I really, I think it looks really balanced. I was very impressed.
I, I am so pleased with the team. Uh, the team that we had was a very strong team, um, and everyone had a part in it. We could not have gotten this done without the team that we had.
Any other questions? Um, I, I would just echo, uh, the gratitude. This is very complicated work. That is so exciting to see what this is gonna look like and the rebalancing that will result in the, the decrease in the pressure on, on Marshall and Breed and, and opportunities for that many students to enjoy the new Pickering. So it's, uh, very exciting, and I want to particularly thank Lauren Drago, who's here tonight from the planning department, um, who's here, uh-
She was a great help.
Yeah, yeah, and is amazing with this kind of data and analysis, and we, we really appreciate it, so, thank you. And Danielle, too.
He gets a shout-out.
Yeah, he gets a shout-out every time, so, yeah. No, we, it, we have a terrific team, and we're very fortunate, so, uh. With, with that, I'm gonna ask, uh, for an amendment to the agenda to take up E because it's connected to this on the, the typos in the street directory. So if someone could make a motion to move E from new business up to now.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
So this is a pretty quick, uh, piece. Through the work with the street directory, uh, there were some, um, errors in the street directory, and I just need you to know the street directory is a PDF. It's not even an electronic version. So, um, the, you know, reviewing basically the changes that were made. Uh, these need to, we, these were the issues we found and the need to change. So, um, the one issue was two, uh, instances of addresses being assigned to multiple districts instead of the one that they were actually assigned to. The requested edit is to edit N, uh, North and South Common Numbers to avoid the overlap. Uh, another issue we found was several streets missing in the directory because they didn't exist or didn't have residential buildings. Some proposed additions did not have residential bu, buildings. So we need to add Blossom Street Extension, uh, is it Bubler? Bubbler? Bubier Street? I don't know how you pronounce that.
Bubier.
Bubier, okay. Bubier Street, Carolyn's Road, Carroll Way, Day Street, Ellis Street, Faton Road, uh, Freeman Square, Gas Wharf Road, Gibson Place, Hanson Street, Ha, uh, Harding Street, Marine Boulevard, McDonough Square, and Susan Drive. None of those streets were in the directory. We need to add them. And then, another issue, there was one minor typo. Uh, the edit i, is, instead of Wayne Street, it should be Wayne Ave. And then there were three streets that don't exist and are apparent, uh, misspellings of other streets. So we want to remove Purdon Street, Kendall Street, and Winston Street. So should you vote to approve, we can go forward and make these corrections.
Questions? Yep. Do you have a question?
No.
Okay. What's the rule of committee?
To make the edits.
Yep. And, just to be clear, the motion is just to make these changes, not-
Yes, not, exactly.
There's a lot more process going into the other thing we just did. Okay.
I make a motion to make the edits.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña? Absent. Member Reed?
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Great. Thank you so much. Alright, next item is student involvement in decision-making. Good evening once again, and for the record, again, Charlie Gallo, a Lynn Public Schools compliance officer, and here with-
Adi Salgoris, deputy superintendent.
Now, I'll just take a very brief moment of privilege and tell you that this will not be as exciting as the Pickering presentation. But it will be more exciting than the Title IX presentation. But in all seriousness, I'm so glad to have a couple of students, or several students here tonight, because what we're talking about is student involvement in decision-making, which is, is an existing school committee policy, JIB, and it's really exciting work to, uh, do here. Um, here's an agenda, uh, for what we're gonna talk about tonight. You know, I'm compliant, so I'm gonna root this in the law and the policy. I'm also gonna share with you some research that we did, uh, on other districts and how other districts do this. And then I'm gonna turn over to Deputy Gores, um, to talk about a plan moving forward. This is not a new policy. We're not looking for a vote. This is more a presentation, um, and to get your feedback, um, on a proposed plan. So, this is what the statute says, and the statute says that there shall be, uh, student school committee, that it shall meet at least once every other month during the school year, that there shall be five members, that they're elected from the high schools, and that they elect, um, they elect from themselves, uh, a chairperson. And that chairperson is an ex officio member of the school committee who attends school committee meetings, who abides by school committee rules, um, other than participating in executive session. Um, that's what the statute says. Um, your policy echoes the statute. This is your existing policy, JIB. I've put in blue the, uh, portion that is, is governing here, but again, student school committee meets at least every other month. Five students elected by high school, uh, by their high school student bodies, and among themselves, a non-voting member of the school committee other than executive, uh, sessions. So, we tried to look at what other districts were doing. There's not a lot visibly going on. That's a cricket. Um, and, and that's just to illustrate that for you. I found on, um, in my research, only four visible student school committees in the state. Uh, the deputies were all very kind and put out to their networks to, um, see if other districts wanted to share what they do, and two stepped forward. And so we had a list of six throughout the whole state, and we were able to talk to four of the six of them. Um, Stoughton and Malden were able to trade emails with their superintendents. Uh, Worcester and Boston, we were able to meet with the, uh, folks there who run these processes. Um, for one of those large districts, Deputy Rogiro and Gores were kind enough, uh, to join me, and we had a great conversation with our counterpart there. I'm gonna go through sort of intentionally with some anonymity, which each of those four districts do in very basic terms. One of them has a student advisory committee. They're doing it their own way. It meets three to four times per year with some school committee members prior to a school committee meeting. Um, so they're sort of taking, their, the spirit is there, but they're taking significant liberties with the, um, the statute. Another of them is just getting their student advisory committee off their gra, off the ground, and they're just kind of following along with the statute. They held a campaign and elections. Um, their, last I talked to them, are going to be electing one of their own to serve as chairperson, and then next year, that chairperson will be, uh, a non-voting member of the school committee. And then they're going a little bit beyond the statute. Uh, they have a loose plan for the student advisory committee as a whole to meet with the superintendent, um, and the chair and vice-chair of the school committee every other month. Not required by statute, but a nice idea. Uh, one of the other districts that we talked to, um, is, uh, again, doing things mostly by statute, and so I won't go through that again, except to say that they had some defined purposes and focuses that I think we can sort of borrow from. Uh, student voice and policies, um, also a learning opportunity and a leadership opportunity. And, and Deputy Gores will talk about how we hope to, uh, spread that opportunity equitably inland. And then finally, uh, and this was another district that, um, took liberties, elected, and it was one of the larger districts, but they have a 25-member student advisory committee. Um, they, um, they, uh, have one school, one of those 25 who serves on their school committee. They meet regularly. They have a district designee that they meet regularly with and twice a year meet with the school committee. And they had a couple of, um, good sort of nuggets, um, that we pulled from them. One is that their student advisory council really decides its own focus. And so this year, their student advisory council decided, we're gonna look at program or, programming around healthy relationships, around affinity groups, and around budgetary concerns, and that came from the students. And now, even though this is a large one, 25, taking, you know, liberties with the, the sort of wording of the statute, the suggestion from this district was that they started small when they did this, and I think that's a suggestion that we may take as well. So that is our research. I'm gonna pass it to Deputy Gores then for a proposed action plan, uh, and to, to share with you some ideas on, on how to do something inland.
Thank you, Attorney Gallo. So our proposed action plan is, uh, for us to be in compliance with the law and the policy, is to begin this spring with our current high schools, Classical English, LVTI, FDCA, and Fecto Leary, to open nominations and select one freshman, sophomore, or junior to serve through the end of school year '26. Um, with that, student government members and student superintendent cabinet members are not eligible for the nomination since they're already serving roles to, um, be part of decision-making. Expectation that the SAC members work with the student government members and the superintendent student cabinet members, and coordinate time to collaborate. So we're being mindful of equitable division of opportunities for student voice. In spring of 2025, we're hoping that SAC members would then elect one of their own to serve as a student rep on the school committee, uh, and, uh, with allowance to appoint a designee for absences, trips, or scholarship opportunities? Or an elect, uh, an alternate for that designee. So effective September 2025, we are hoping this would replace our current system of student school committee member. In addition, uh, we'd like to find a regular monthly time for SAC members to meet together with one, um, or two school committee members, um, keeping in mind and being mindful of open meeting law, with at least one additional visitor per session, such as a superintendent or designee, mayor or designee, or others. We'd like to obtain student voice in topics that will be before the school committee and allow students to initiate their own topics of interest that align to aspects of LPS portrait of a graduate. So that is our proposal for an action plan to be in compliance with our, um, student involvement decision-making policy, JIB.
Any questions?
Great. Thank you so much. Questions? Member Dugan?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, this is a great plan. I, I love it. Um, so just to be clear, and, um, we have all this in our policy. We just haven't been meeting it. And so that, that's important. We do that, obviously, so I appreciate this. Um, in terms of the, do you have, do you have a recommendation on how we kind of work with the school committee and get members there? Do you, like, is there, like, working schedule, Google Doc, like, do you guys recommend? Or do you think we should just get together and figure that out? Like, what do you guys recommend there?
For the school committee members?
Yeah, for us at those meetings, yeah.
At those meetings?
Yeah.
I mean, I think the power of virtual meeting is, is acceptable-
Okay.
-in order to ensure student voice is at the table, and that the two school committee members are present to hear that voice.
Okay, so you're planning on virtual meetings for those?
I think that would be, um, advisable, given the different schedules that students have, and not to impede their opportunities to be involved in after-school activities and sports.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor Reed?
Thank you. This is great. It's great stuff forward. Really appreciate the work. Um, just one suggestion, or I guess one thing to put in the backyard. Maybe if we could also have, like, a requirement that they get to present, maybe one meeting a year or something, something like that, because even if it falls to us, you know, our agenda is pretty rigid as well, so, I don't know. Something like that, just to throw around.
Any other questions? Excellent. That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a field trip request for Breed. What's the recommendation of the superintendent?
The recommendation is to approve the field trip for Breed, grade eight, to Kenobi Lake Park, Salem, New Hampshire, on June 11th, 2025.
So what are the committee?
Make a motion to move forward with the recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Savit? Donations?
Um, the next, um, work is to accept a donation of $2,000 from King Lynn Residence Council, um, to Breed Middle School.
Make a motion to move forward with the recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Savit?
The next is a donation, uh, to accept a donation of $2,000 from King's Lynn Residence Council to Classical High School.
Make a motion to move forward with the recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Savit?
The next one is to accept a donation of 500 Red Sox tickets.
The next one is to accept a donation of 500 Red Sox tickets, food vouchers, and transportation to and from the game from Stop &amp; Shop to Washington Elementary School to commemorate the fifth anniversary of the Stop &amp; Shop-sponsored food pantry.
Make a motion to move forward with the recommendation.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Post. Let's have it. We already did E. By the way, thank you to the King's Lynn Resident Council and to Stop &amp; Shop, and congratulations to Washington Elementary. That food pantry project there is amazing and well-deserved celebration for that group, so, great work. E, we already handled. F, we're going to ask for someone to table this because the family wasn't able, had a conflict to do in the future.
I'll make a motion to table discussion on our name effect of Larry.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Post. Let's have it. Vote to cancel eighth regular meeting, April 24th, because it's school vacation week.
Make a motion to cancel the meeting on April 8th, April 24th, 2025.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Post. Let's have it. Next is the budget development timeline.
Thank you. So as we face significant challenges, the challenge of balancing our district's budget, I'm sharing a recommendation that reflects both our fiscal realities and our steadfast commitment to the core values that define our educational mission. In developing a path forward, I want to prioritize protecting our teachers, academic programs, and student support services. These pillars of student success must remain intact to preserve the high-quality education our community expects and our students deserve. In a thorough review of our student achievement data, including our mid-year data, we are pleased to see strong growth in our elementary schools where data indicates that instructional strategies and interventions implemented are driving positive outcomes for our students. This progress is a testament to the dedication of our educators, the successful adoption of evidence-based instructional practices, and our commitment to early literacy and foundational skills and an investment in C I Ts. However, the data reflects a stagnant trend at the secondary level, and the coaching model may not have the desired impact. The information provides an opportunity to reflect on what is and isn't working and to identify areas where we can refine and strengthen our strategies to better meet the needs of our middle and high school students. As a data-driven decision-making district, a reduction in administrative and non-incentual positions to close our budget gap will be necessary. While these roles contribute meaningfully to our system, we must make difficult decisions that place students, classrooms, and equity at the center. To guide our decision-making, I want to highlight the distinction between the sources of funding. Specifically, Chapter 70 state aid and federal grants and how it impacts what we can protect and what may be at risk. Chapter 70 funding supports core educational operations. This funding includes classroom teachers, instructional programming, curriculum, and student-facing services. While Chapter 70 is projected to increase by 29.5 million, L P S will be receiving an additional 20 million to our budget. However, this is insufficient to fully cover the rising cost of staff, contractual obligations, grant reductions, and inflation. From fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26, the city's indirect cost projections increase the overall contribution by 9.26%, rising from 87.2 million to 95.3 million, a difference of over 8 million. Health insurance is the most significant cost driver, which will increase by 10.20% a total of 3.1 million. Other notable increases include pension costs rising by 11.79%, which is 2 million, and inspectional services increasing by 9.73%, which is 2.4 million. Workers' compensation experiences the highest percentage increase at 15%, though its dollar impact is 75,000. These are modest increases. There are modest increases in retiree health insurance at 5.62% and property and liability insurance, 3.37%, while life insurance and administrative costs remain flat. These increases contribute to the current L P S projection of a 6 million over budget necessitating potential cost-saving measures. The implication of, implication of these costs places an additional strain on the L P S budget. The district has significant budget commitments that affect our ability to balance the budget for school year '26. Curriculum investments, K-8, are totaling $7.8 million. We have made substantial investments in high-quality evidence-based curriculum materials to ensure that all students have access to rigorous academic content aligned with state standards. These curriculum adoptions are critical to improving student outcomes but require ongoing financial yearly commitments for materials, professional development, and implementation support. Technology upgrades and maintenance require a $5 million commitment. The district has prioritized providing equitable access to technology by ensuring that all students have devices that our technology infrastructure is up to date. While these investments have improved digital, improved digital learning opportunities, they also come with ongoing costs for maintenance, software licenses, and device replacements to sustain our one-to-one technology model. This amount includes deferred expenses from last year, last school year as well. Pre-K early education, 1.6 million. Recognizing the importance of early education and literacy, we have expanded pre-K programming to serve more families and provide young learners with a strong foundation for academic success. Additionally, we have invested in early literacy programs and interventions to ensure that all students develop critical reading skills by grade three. These efforts, while essential for closing achievement gaps and improving long-term outcomes, require ongoing funding for staffing, curriculum materials, professional development, and targeted interventions. The opening of City Arts Sciences Academy, 1.5 million. The projected opening of CASA in September of 2025 has provided new opportunities for specialized programming, as well as a lower class size at English and Classical. However, the launch of any new school, with the launch of any new school, there are associated operational costs, including staffing, facilities, and program management, which add to the district's overall financial commitments. The expansion of Frederick Douglass Collegiate Academy, 1.5 million. The expansion of F D C A will allow us to serve more students with high-quality academic and career pathway programs. It will also bring down class size at English and Classical. However, this growth has required additional resources for staffing, programming, and infrastructure to ensure the continued success of the expanded program. The overages highlight the urgent need for strategic budget cuts or cost reductions to maintain fiscal stability and protect classroom instruction and required resources. Additionally, federally funded programs are facing an anticipated 20% reduction, and competitive grants may not be available. These funds have supported positions and initiatives such as intervention staff, coaching positions, mental health support, and enrichment programs. A federal budget reduction might necessitate further cuts to adjust to the title's school year '26 allocation. We continue to wait for concrete guidance on federal funding. I want to assure you that we are fully aware of the immense value that all personnel bring to our school communities and that their importance is central to the difficult decisions that we are currently facing. The district confronting a $6 million budget shortfall due to rising costs, indirect expenses, and instructional commitments, we are being forced to explore reductions that will have the least possible impact on direct student services. Every position in our district represents a valued individual and a contribution to our broader mission. However, our responsibility is to ensure that our strategic choices reflect our commitment to academic excellence, equity, and whole-child development, even in times of constraint. By working together with transparency, compassion, and collaboration, we can make necessary adjustments while preserving the essential elements for our students to thrive. I appreciate your continued partnership and dedication to our schools. Then, we have shared a timeline. I've shared a timeline, which essentially hasn't changed. So the, this year, typically in February, we begin by reviewing with the district team and the school committee chair on current projections and funding sources and emerging gaps. This year, we began doing that much earlier. I would say probably mid-January, right after we returned from the recess. By mid-February, we had already done administrative reviews of departmental and building-level budgets preliminarily within the district, and were ready to meet with principals, school site administrators, and department administrators at the district. Early March, we typically take a deep dive into our budget categories, which look at staffing implications, funding source breakdown, meaning really, what do we, are we receiving? We're, at that point, better equipped by getting a number from the state based on, you know, what is it that we're going to have in an allocation, and looking at what's Chapter 70 versus federal funding. Just, we have, we have looked at the federal funding, and the federal funding in the L P S budget constitutes about an 8% of our total revenue. In mid, by mid-March, we do initial prioritization discussions on potential reductions, reallocations, funding gaps, with a focus on preserving Chapter 70-funded positions and planning for reduced federal funding. We also did a thorough review after meeting with human resources and union leadership, not just the positions, but we looked at programmatic potential changes that would impact staffing. By late March, which we're in now, we do, we talk about, you know, what is the city released department allocation, which we received last week, and the draft budget is refined based on feedback and updated enrollment or financial data, and then the school committee is provided with communication. By May, we are doing budget statement letters to city council meeting, expressing what is the total commitment that the, the school department is receiving, and then what is the proposed budget presented to the school committee for review and approval. We will then, and by June, do, the first meeting is typically, holds a public hearing on the proposed budget, which is required by law. Then we also have a vote on the budget that's submitted to city officials in accordance with our municipal deadlines. And by late June, we make any final adjustments based on the votes and the outcomes of those votes in preparation for implementation and any staffing decisions for the upcoming year.
Thank you, Dr. Alvarez. We've, you know, talked a lot before about the general process, and this was helpful. Thank you, Dr. Alvarez, to run through it. This is obviously something we're going to be working on a lot over the next couple months, so looking forward to doing that. Just as a reminder, you know, here in the school committee, we have control and a responsibility to allocate the department's budget. But the, the school committee, the school department, the superintendent does not set the overall number. We, the, the school department, the superintendent, the school committee, we allocate within the number that the school department's budget is. But the, the overall number is the, the, what is set by the city, and that's a function, as you all know, that starts with the state net school spending number, which is a product of the, the foundation budget, and then, you know, how much money the, the state puts into that. So the state releases its net school, so, sorry, the governor releases its net school spending number. So as, as you all remember, this is all subject to change as they go, works as many legislative processes. But the governor submits its net school spending number. That, you know, triggers a calculation based on us as a community, of how much would come from the state versus how much is going to come from a local contribution. And then that's the total amount that we need to spend on education, and we need to hit that 100%. And you, I think it was at the last meeting, we were talking about tracking that for last year and this year, and we've made a commitment that we're, that we're going to be at 100% of net school spending, and we, and we've hit that consistently. And so that number is the total amount we spent on education, and then the, the city sets the, what is allocated to the school versus what is spent on education on the, on the city side. And as we've talked about before, most, a lot of that is the, the indirect expenses of our personnel, like health insurance and retiree and pension costs, but also the, the facilities. So that's where we are.
Can I just have a quick tech?
Yeah. Member Reed?
When, sorry. When we're talking about Chapter 70 funding, so we got 29.5, and but the school side's getting 20 million, is that because the other nine and a half million goes to city side? Is that what we're talking about there or no?
Yes. Well, eight goes to this, goes to the city indirect, and then there's, there's, I think the balance is charter school increase in tuition?
Yep.
Because that council is not.
Yep. All right. Cool. Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Any, and, and obviously, I said this already, but just to, to point out, this is the beginning of a, of a process that will take place over the next several weeks. And so there will be a formal budget that is given to you as we, as we always do, right? And then, I know each of you will have extensive questions, right, as we go through that process. And in the past, what we've done is, is try to collect those as best we can, because that's most efficient, and get, get you the answers, and then kind of publish them all out. So we'll, we'll do all that, but I know the superintendent wanted to, to lay that all out as we, as we move forward, so we're on the same page about, like, what the process is going to, going to be from here as we get to the, the budget. Yep.
When will the council be setting that number?
So the, the, the council will be voting on the number in May, May, end of May usually.
Okay.
But, but I have, I have given the proposed number.
Okay.
And that, that comes from me.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Great. Well, look forward to that process, and I'm working with everybody, so thank you. Next is, were there any votes taken in the Building and Ground Subcommittee?
Yep. There sure was. So at Ford School, there was a motion made to approve painting playgrounds, activities on the community pavement in the schoolyard.
So will the committee?
Make a motion to approve.
Yep.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Post. Let's have it.
Okay. There was a motion made to allow Druid School make a mosaic mural in the hallway.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Post. Let's have it.
And then there was a motion made to allow Connery to make a mosaic mural that would be on wood and hanging in the hallway also.
Some.
Yep. On favor?
Aye.
Is that wrong?
Let's have it. Nope, we're doing great.
Wonderful.
That was it, right?
Yep.
Great. Policy sub.
All right. So in the policy sub, there were three motions. The first was to accept amended policies, A C A, A C A B, and A C.
I'll take that in the form of motion, so I just need a second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. The second.
That project, it was, it was a different project.
Let me tell them. Connery, Connery is in front of the, the mural would be held, hung in front of the school.
Can we, can we?
Amend.
Make a motion to that item? Ms. Johnson, is that going to be permitted?
To the Connery project? Yes.
All right. Let's do that.
It's going to be outside.
Should we make a motion?
Sure. Motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Let's have it.
Got you. All right.
Again, in sub, policy sub, there was a second motion to accept amended policies, J M, G B A, G C F, I J, J B, J E B A, J F B B, J I H.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaitley?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Absent.
Member Satowite?
Yes.
Member Reed?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And the third motion that went to the full committee from the policy sub were to accept the amended policies, I J N D B dash S, J I C A, and J I C F B.
Second. On favor?
Second.
Aye. Post. Let's have it.
Okay. And that was that?
Great. Great job.
And that was that?
Great. Great job. Um, do you want to amend, so we can do the super? Okay, I'm looking for amendment to the agenda to move the superintendent's report before the executive session.
Make a motion to move the superintendent's report as the next item on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
So, March is recognized nationally as Women's History Month, a time to honor contributions of women throughout history and today. Across our schools, students and staff have engaged in thoughtful activities, classroom lessons, and school-wide events that spotlight the impact of women in science, politics, education, the arts, and beyond. I'm proud of the way our educators are encouraging students to think critically about gender equity and leadership while also celebrating local and global role models who have paved the way. As a part of our commitment to equity for all students and families, I'm happy to report that the Compliance Department's translation interpretation function is on track to provide or arrange for interpretation of more than 4,000 meetings this school year, with many more thousands of documents to be translated. To develop a solid understanding of translation interpretation requirements that exist in law and equity, the Compliance Department offers a presentation on translation interpretation compliance in a number of settings. The Translation Interpretation Manager, Guillermo Sinelli, presents regularly to principals, vice principals, and elementary program specialists, district-level departments, psychologists, and other relevant staff. The Prism, the work with Prism grant is underway. DESI has partnered with the district with TNTP. All identified Prism schools will take part in a survey over the next several weeks. We will coordinate with Prism schools to facilitate school visits so that TNTP can observe the literacy blocks in grades pre-K through 3. These two data components will then be utilized to develop a system report for the district. The data and the feedback will also determine grant fund allocation from DESI for the upcoming school year. Project-based learning, professional development with PBL Works is well underway, with 70 middle and high school teachers trained this year, as well as school-based and district leadership teams. These groups participated in PBL 101 sessions, sustained school visit, school support visits, school and district leadership coaching calls, and workshops. Next year, the training is set to train 140 more teachers in this core instructional methodology, creating a wave of engaging students' learning experiences. This is a wonder, and, this is an A wonderful blog post by PBL Works features this work of LinTech, can be found at pblworks.org. We continue to provide opportunities for students to learn more than one language. More than 350 seniors will be testing in the first two weeks of April in languages including Spanish, French, Arabic, German, Portuguese, Italian, Haitian Creole, Bosnian, Vietnamese, Albanian, Bengali, Khmer, Lugwanda, Yoruba, and with a global, with a goal of achieving the SEAL by Literacy Designation. Good news for our student athletes, our nursing administration and Assistant Director of Health and PE are working with Boston Children's Hospital to arrange free physicals for high school athletes in the summer. All athletes are required to have a physical before participating in preseason practices, so we know that this will be a help to many families, so stay, stay tuned for that information. In the interest of continually trying to attract quality educators to our district, we will have staff at the Massachusetts Education Recruiting Consortium at Boston University on April 24th. LPS was able to secure two booths, and a sign-up sheet is available for principals and directors to attend. Drawing on the feedback, for the first year of the Student Opportunity Act between 2024 and 2027, I would like to share that the following key highlights with you here tonight. Our plan prioritizes addressing disparities for Hispanic-Latino students, English learners, and students with disabilities throughout the implementation of key evidence-based programs such as multi-tiered systems of support, effective programming for multilingual learners, and high-quality secondary pathways and programs, particularly in regard to our expansion of MYCAP and Chapter 74 programming. Regarding MTSS, significant efforts have been made in developing an MTSS framework to support all students academically, socially, and emotionally, and behaviorally, and in our MTSS Guidance Handbook. To support these efforts, we have focused on increasing the use of data-driven practices through the expansion of open architect data dashboards to better understand students' strengths and needs. Professional learning was provided to administrators and educators by utilizing these dashboards for analyzing student achievement and attendance. Effective programming for multilingual learners in the SOA Student Opportunity Act Plan is represented in the expansion of our dual-language program. We continue to expand at Harrington and Connery Elementary Schools and are planning future expansions to Thurgood Marshall Middle School in the, in the school year after next. Master schedules are already being revised to accommodate the dual-language schedule. For our third Student Opportunity Act initiative, High Quality Secondary Pathways and Programs, we have primarily focused on growing the MYCAP and Chapter 74 programming. MYCAP has been fully implemented in grades 6 through 12, emphasizing goal-setting, college and career readiness, internships, and career speaker engagements. A project manager has overseen MYCAP implementation and developed a cadre of 62 career speakers. Chapter 74 programs have expanded with new biotechnology and construction pathways. We have also increased early college seats, expanded advanced placement offerings significantly, and continued development of the Innovative STEAM Academy, which is CASA. Looking ahead for the 2025, 2026 school year, we will focus on strengthening tiered instruction and professional development, enhancing Tier 1 instruction with culturally and linguistically responsive pedagogy, finalizing the MTSS Handbook, strengthening data utilization practices, and expanding Tier 2 and Tier 3, social, emotional, and mental health practices. We will also continue the expansion of the dual-language program and focus of strengthening family engagement and communication. We recognize that this is ongoing work, and that there are areas where progress may be slower than anticipated due to various factors, including staffing, time for collaboration, and the complexity of addressing student needs. We are committed to analyzing our data, gathering feedback, and making necessary adjustments to ensure the successful implementation of the Student Opportunity Act Plan and improve outcomes for all of our students. We will continue to provide updates on our progress throughout the year. Speaking of women who have made an immeasurable impact tonight, we offer our gratitude to Deputy Superintendent Deb Rogero, whom you have heard will retire in September, yes, this September. Deb has served our district with distinction in a variety of roles for 40 years. Yes, you heard right, four decades. While we are sorry to lose her, we are happy for her to experience what she calls the next chapter of her life. We wish her health and happiness, and look forward to continuing to benefit from her experience and work ethic for the next five months. Good luck, and we wish you all the best. I want to interject something before I read my final statement. This afternoon, I spoke to the superintendent in Wakefield, who, we had been playing phone tag for a day. He told me that I was supposed to receive an award on behalf of the Lynn Public School students this evening at 8:00 PM in the auditorium. And so, the, if you all know, the Jimi Hendrix Experience is playing there this evening, and Jimi Hendrix's daughter is going to give Julie Carroll, our Assistant Director for Music, an award, and she will be accepting on my behalf and behalf of all of the students. It is a guitar, an original guitar from Jimi Hendrix that he is donating to our students. So I thought that was exciting, and I wanted to share that before I close. Finally, we must end the, the month of March with a lot of joy. The art exhibit opened at Lynn Arts last evening, and it'll remain open until Saturday, March 29th, at 2:00 PM. And so, the student artwork is impressive, it's inclusive, and it's simply beautiful. And with gratitude, have a good night.
If you don't mind, I would like to share my thoughts and express my thanks. Dear Mayor Nicholson and members of the school committee, I'm writing to formally announce my retirement, I'm going to, oh God, my retirement as Deputy Superintendent of the Lynn Public Schools, effective September 5th, 2025. That will be exactly 40 years. My seniority date is September 4th of 1985, so I intentionally am working until the first week of school next year. After 40 years of dedicated service to our school district, I have decided that it's time for me to step down and begin the next chapter of my life. Reflecting on my career, I'm filled with immense pride and gratitude for the opportunities I've had to contribute to the growth and success of our district. It has truly, it has been truly an honor to work alongside such talented and compassionate educators, administrators, and staff. Together, we've navigated numerous challenges and celebrated many achievements, always with the shared goal of providing the best possible education for our students. I want to personally thank all of you for your support, leadership, and collaboration over the past few years. I would also like to extend my sincerest thank you and appreciation to the current and former superintendents and school committee members that I have served under. The support and trust the school committee has made my time in Lynn very special. I am particularly proud of the relationships I have developed over these 40 years. These relationships have meant more to me than anyone will ever understand. It has made me who I am as an educator, but more importantly, as a person. I believe that every person who touches another, another's life ignites the passion and progress of the other. There are so many people throughout LPS that have touched my career and have ignited my passion. You all have made a difference for me and make a difference for your students every day. We all should be proud of the many initiatives we have implemented to enhance student learning, support teacher development, and foster a positive and inclusive school culture. These accomplishments would not have been possible without the unwavering support and collaboration of my colleagues and the community. As I prepare for my retirement, I am committed to ensuring a smooth transition. I will work closely with my successor and the leadership team to provide any assistance needed during this period. I am confident that the district will continue to thrive and achieve new heights under their capable leadership. Thank you for the trust and support you have shown me throughout my tenure. I am deeply grateful for the relationships that I've built and, and the experience I've gained. I look forward to staying connected with the district and witnessing its continued success from a new perspective, with deep respect and appreciation.
Congratulations, and thank you so much for 40 years of incredible service. Congratulations.
All right, next item, it would be a request for executive session for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Kevin McQ and Heather Fabiano, to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to the Lynn School Administrators Association and Lynn Teachers Union Local 1037. Discussion of these matters which involve strategy in open meeting may have a detrimental effect on and compromise the bargaining position of the body, and strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to part-time monitors Teamsters Local 42. Discussion of these matters which involve strategy in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on and compromise the bargaining position of the public body.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Peña, absent.
Yes.
Member Sadowite?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Uh. I don't think we did anything.
Lost my voice.
Sir, motion to return to?
Make a motion to return to regular session?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Uh, member Castellanos?
Oh, he's in the bathroom.
Absent. Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Peña, absent. Member Reed?
Present.
Member Reed?
Present.
Member Sadowite?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
We're voting yes on that one. Uh, we took no votes in executive session, and seeing no further business.
motion no join.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, nice to have it.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye. Wait a minute.